School Board, everybody's present. I see no additions to the agenda.
Not having additions.
Entertaining motion to adopt the agenda that we have.
So will.
Motion by Cheryl.
Second.
Second by Kala. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Approving and correcting minutes from the December 2nd, 2014 regular meeting. I have a motion from Deb.
Second.
A second from David. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, we're at financial reports. Final audit 2014 treasures report. I saw that you guys didn't hear about.
Yeah, there's one addition this time in that at the end of the year, we need to adjust our treasury report and that's in there right now. The bottom amount is the same, that hasn't changed, we just had to adjust because of property tax shift, some interest and that kind of stuff, the state kind of dictates where we put things. So again, the bottom line as far as the total amount is actually is the same between the one that we did back in 1014 and this one. Just going to recommend that we approve.
Okay, do you expect we should approve that one separate because it's.
You could certainly do that.
And then the other two together, thoughts on that?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the final audit June 2014 treasures report?
Aye.
A motion by Lou.
Second.
Second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Then we've got November 2014 treasures report and monthly balance sheet. Anybody see anything out of the ordinary? I have a motion from David to approve the treasures and the balance sheet.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Now, we are audit and approval of bills, additional November 2014 bills and December 2014 bills. And Mark, send it your way.
Okay, I had the opportunity just before the meeting to go over the additional November bills and compare to December bills as they are written, and I'd make the recommendation to approve them out there.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion from Mark for approval. I'll second that motion. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, we have one item on the consent agenda. Review and consider approval of the following non-athletic assignments for the 2014-15 school year yearbook advisor, Courtney Miller.
Yeah, just to remind the board that this should be a class. It is now an after-school activity, so what we've done is we've had to work with the organization to come up with an amount in a place that we would put this individual on, the extracurricular piece, we've come to an agreement on that. So it won't be outside, they do this as just like their extracurricular academic piece for this, so that's what changes, and that's why we're coming forward at this point. I'd certainly recommend approval.
Did you have very many people interested in the position?
Uh, no. There were limited numbers that applied. Very limited.
I have a motion from Deb to approve the assignment of Courtney Miller to the yearbook advisor, and a second by Kala. Any further discussion?
I would just mention to the board that just because we didn't have two applicants, we're very happy with the individual that we have.
That's a good point. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, I think to keep rolling here, and the kids are not here, so they look like they were next on the agenda. Now, we have another one, the number five in business. We are going to hold that till.
Yes, we'll have to hold that as long as we can. Till she gets off, or when the students get here, spend a lot of time talking to board, and then she'll get off and she'll be in for that, so he can do any of the other ones, so.
So if it's agreeable with everybody, let's do two, three, and four at this point for business items. Okay, number two is review and consider approval of the final 2014 payable 2015 levy certification.
If the board remembers, we did table this from last meeting just because we didn't have the exact amount because of the bond seller, seller at a lower interest rate than we thought. As I mentioned in the addendum, we did save $7,971.99 because we received the lower interest rate. What I do need is a motion to approve the levy certification for the 2014 payable 2015 at $2,748,888.96.
So that's the motion?
That is, I did. I want the exact amount.
The motion by Deb? And a second by Lou? Anybody from the public on that? Okay, hearing nothing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, review and consider approval of resolution directing administration to look at budget adjustments for the 2015-16 school year.
You do have the resolution or packet, it's the same resolution that we've done virtually every year at this time. It just allows me to go ahead and take a look at our budget, make any recommendations to the board, and this, just me going in looking at it, the budget would have to come back to the board, just like we've done in the past. I would like to also set up a financial committee meeting, have some discussion once we get down a little bit further into January, when I've got some recommendations for adjustments that we would need to make, or that I would recommend that we make. So this is just kind of the first step and everything, it just gives me the power to do it. It is a resolution, so I would recommend a roll call vote when you're ready.
Okay, I have a motion from Deb.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any comments from the public? Hearing none. In direction for the roll call.
All right, Kala? Aye. Mark?
Aye.
Deb? Aye. Dave? Aye. Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl? Aye.
Okay, it's passed. Review and consider, number four, review and consider approval of resolution of school board supporting team grant application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation.
Max, you might just come and go and just kind of remind them, we did the same grant, I think, the last couple of years, just to remind the board and the community on why we asked for this.
Basically, we can't ask the State High School League for money without a resolution from the school board to do so. The State High School League offers grants that allow us to be able to get money to be able to do student activities, use that money for leadership events, put on events throughout the school, directly for students. But we can't do a resolution from the school board.
Okay. We have a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
And a second from Mark. Any further discussion? Anything from the public? Thank you, Max. Nothing from the public?
Mark?
Aye.
Deb? Aye. Dave? Aye.
Lou? Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl? Aye. Kala? Aye.
Okay, so we are there, we don't have kids yet, so does everyone mind if we move on to personnel? Okay with that word? Okay, number one, review and consider approval of maternity leave for Danell Lukum Nurse from approximately January 21st, 2015 through March 10th, 2015. Guess that's all pretty clear.
I would highly recommend approval.
We have a motion from Kala, a second from Lou. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Review and consider approval of temporarily adding 1.5 hours per student contact day to elementary food service effective January 2nd, 2015 through June 1st, 2015.
We did bring this up to the board at the beginning, and I do still need to do bring, what I believe right now is that they need this time. They told me that I do want some flexibility, last time we tied it into specific people, but this time I'm saying, I just want the same amount of time that you had at the beginning of the year for that, which is an hour and a half. I don't want to tie any specific person because we want the flexibility to adjust it, we won't, we don't want to cause overtime or anything like that, so we'll certainly look at that. I do need to bring in somebody from the outside, I just want them to take a look at our food service and just do a comparison on what we need to have and what we maybe could do without, and maybe they could find, they might come in and say, boy, we're really shorthanded, we should have more time. They may come in and say, no, you're at the right amount of time now, or they may give us a number of various opinions on that, I just have not gotten to that particular point yet because of various things, no excuses, just haven't done it. So I'd like to continue this to the end of the year, and I will not come back to the board with this one way or another, it'll either be permanent next time, or won't be there.
Okay, I have a motion from Deb.
Second.
A second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, there's no kids waiting, can we move on? Can you just want everybody? Okay, David, can you come this direction for the elementary school principal report? Like it all, but it might be wrong. Someday they're going to have another camera, so then you'll be.
Now, Dave has been asking for that, so.
I usually spend the morning making my notes, so it's a little bit today. Well, we're just finishing up our first round of practice MCA math, third grade, started today, we've already done the fourth and fifth, and we have the results, we have started looking at some of the data already, and we'll continue to do that at our next in-service. Looks pretty good, I mean, in the past, we've taken the test at the end of October or in November, and then we take it again in February. This year, we held off a little bit, just to give our kids a little bit more time to, and our teachers to go over some of the skills, but looks really good, the test is all new with a different company, and so our teachers and myself are learning along with the students. Danielle does a wonderful job of making sure we're engaged and trained and things like that, so. Right now, we have many students who are absent, not feeling well, high temperatures, we have had some influenza cases, and so I'll be working with Danielle, and we're going to have my newsletter for January, it will go out on Friday, so hopefully things will get better over Christmas break.
In fact, I think I just sent the principals something from MDE saying that it's fighting right now for this and the state.
So we'll just get word out there, we don't want students coming to school ill, and it doesn't help anybody with that, so hopefully, when we come back in January, we can maybe get things sampleized through all our classrooms in the building and start fresh in January, hopefully. Parent-teacher conferences went well, we had, overall, we had about a 97% attendance rate, that's either that they came on their scheduled time, sometimes we'll do a conference if there's an IEP meeting within a couple of weeks of conferences, and some meetings we do over the phone or other arrangements, so 97% is typically about where we're at, so no changes there. Technology, we have been meeting as a building technology team, we're putting together some needs, trying to look into the future a little bit for next year and the year after, and so we have a technology meeting on Thursday, and we will present a list of items that we're looking for and the direction that we want to go. Any questions for me now?
Thank you very much.
Timing is perfect.
This is a small group, there should be some more. Then you guys can take turns telling about your experience.
And if you could use the mic and just.
Can I pass that?
As a reminder, we are taping this, and you get to watch yourselves on TV next few weeks, I suppose.
Right now, it's the We. Some of them are on board.
Okay. So we are the students that went to We Day, which includes the TLC members and the SAD reps. I am a senior SAD representative and a part of TLC. So we're going to start with Hallie and Lloyd on board.
So maybe you can introduce yourself, and then maybe say something that you brought back from the We Day experience.
Yeah, it might be nice to get the community and the board just a little bit, I know we talked about it once here, but a little bit more of an explanation on what the We piece is all about.
And how about if you do that?
I'm Hallie Johnson, and I'm part of the TLC leaders, and I thought We Day was really fun because we kind of learned more about what we can do to help our society and our generation grow into better, positive people, and it was really inspiring just to see that our generation can make a difference in the world.
Okay, We Day was this John Armist convention I went to at the XLM Energy Center in November, like November 12th. And we went there, and so we learned about empowering our generation and stuff, and they talked about the definition of powerful is the ability to impact the life of another person, and so that just means like, like I have power, or like I'm being powerful right now because I'm talking to you and I'm impacting your life, so you don't have to be like a big person like, I don't know, like some of the people that were there, like Magic Johnson, or Mark Dayton, and all those like big name people, you don't have to be a big name person to be powerful, like as long as you're impacting someone else's life, you have power, so.
All right, one thing I took from it was, there's a lot of people there from third-world countries, and it just made me realize how thankful I am for what I have, and I know that I take what I have for granted a lot, but just that I'm a lot better off than a lot of other people out there, so just to be thankful for what you have.
So when we went to We Day, they had different like periods, so it was treated kind of as a school day, and each period was about a different type of empowerment, like social empowerment, or technological or educational types of empowerment, and it was really cool to hear that from these famous people because when you see them on TV and stuff, you don't really look at them as like the same type of person as you, but when you see that they have these same values that we do, and they have several students, and they have overcome that and helped us to see that in my school year, I've had some of those.
I learned that it doesn't really matter who you are, I mean, you're all just equal, and that's kind of like what Deanna said, that it doesn't matter if you have a both famous names, you're all equal, and what you do can affect someone in a positive way, or maybe the way.
One of the things that I took out of We Day was, just because you have a good life doesn't mean you don't have the ability to change another person's life. You might be privileged, but there's other people in third-world countries that are starving and not having a mom or dad, no children, that doesn't mean you can't donate a goat or donate other stuff to help them live better.
Maybe skip over and start back.
Okay, with what Houston said, I thought there was a lot of cool fundraising ideas, like these bracelets are here called the T P, which means friend in Africa, and there were $10, $5 went to our number marker, and then the other $5 went to the woman in Africa that needed, so I thought that was pretty cool, and then like $50 to buy a goat that uses 16 glasses of milk each day, and that can like save lives in Africa, so I thought that was kind of cool.
And those students that are just joining us, that were part of the We Day group, if you can introduce yourself and talk about something that you brought back from We Day, either an experience you had there or something that you've used since you've come back. Is that all?
I'm Colin Riley. I really enjoyed like the stories that these amazing people had to share, the one, I remember the most was RJ, he was a, he'd been in the Army and had a gun in an explosion, his face was all mangled, he was just the happiest guy around, just making every day the best day ever because he was still with us, and that kind of helped put into perspective that you can still live through something and maybe to make a better life for everybody.
I'm Kayla Shaker, and I really enjoyed listening to the speakers as well, what I, a big thing that I got out of it was that we all might have difficulties in our lives, but to be able to go and maybe share your part, story or something, to be able to what you've learned and take positive out of maybe a bad situation, and pass it on to someone else, so that they can use that, and just to, you know, we've all learned something and can carry that on and pass it on to each other, is what I thought I got really out of it.
I'm Joshua Soini, and my favorite speaker, his name isn't really coming to mind right now, but he was, he was a guy who, he was born with some kind of spinal issue, was it? He had to get his entire lower half amputated, and so he didn't have any, he didn't have legs, I think they cut him right under the belly button, I think is what he was, but, you know, he was walking around and he was so happy, you know, he was up on stage, he was grinning ear to ear, it just, he seemed like a really cool guy, and the part that, I don't know how many people actually noticed, but after the blackout, he would actually get off his chair and walk himself to his wheelchair, and I just thought that was pretty cool because even though he's handicapped, he's still independent, and he doesn't really try to make it anyone else's issue, he makes the best of it and actually inspires people instead, so I just thought that was really positive influence on a lot of people's situations.
I'm Stella Aglander, and one thing that I really took is, when you're one person and you're trying to stand up for what you believe is right, you might get really discouraged and feel like you should give up because you think you're only one person, so you like, it's not going to change anything, but if you do give up, then you're for sure not going to change anything, but if you keep going, you might end up losing your searching, patching, right, just personally, so it's like really encouraging, and just to be that one of you, and I'll bless you, keep staying positive, keep going, do what you can.
All right, so I'm Taylor Berg, I'm a TLC leader, and I'm also a SAD, but I'm kind of going to recap We Day and then I'll share my favorites, whatever. Like, and all We Day was, we had singers, we had a couple people sing, we had a ton of speakers, like on their life lessons, and then like how they grew from it, how it helped them, and then we had lessons, like, it was pretty much they went through, and the setup of it was like as school, so it was like first period, and it was like saving the world, and it was like second period, how to be powerful, and it was, so it's set up as, in periods of like how we can all make a difference, and how we can impact each other, and how Taylor was saying that like, we're all powerful, and one person, we can stand up, and like, we're all empowering you guys, we're all, every day we have a choice to empower somebody, we don't have to be the government, like huge thing, we don't need to be the principal, we don't need to be the top of anything, we can do it just by being who we are, kind of thing to empower. So that's kind of what the general of what We Day was, I think it affected us all in a superb way, it was like just life-changing, seeing the kids in Africa without food, and they're making bracelets to make money, and they're trying to do things on their own, to do their own way of being who they want to be, and to make a living for themselves, so that was one of my favorite parts, is that like these tier can help them save their kids, and they have horrible diseases over there that we have fears for, and like, there's so many different ways that we personally can help them out, so that was my favorite, is seeing how we are able as just simple words, high schoolers, and we're able to change the life of an African child or an African mom, so that was my favorite part, being able to see that.
Taylor, could you also share what you guys' two goals or projects are? You have a local project and then. Your, yeah, your local project and your global project, in order. And then welcome back to you, Taylor, if you could speak.
So we are, for everyone that went there, we're supposed to do a global and a local project, and we didn't do a global before, but we are starting now, we're going to raise like the gold to like Madison was talking about, where it's just to get that change, and it's $50 per goat, and that supplies the belt, and then if you saw that, you're going to want to start a business, and so that's what we're going to be starting as a group for a global project.
Our local project, so you had to do, to like get that, like it doesn't cost money, you can't buy tickets to get to We Day, you have to earn your tickets, so that's what the global and local thing is. Our local was our TLC program, and just all the things that go along with that, so like, I don't know, I guess all this big stuff that TLC leaders do is, that's our, was our local project, and our SAD too, yeah, like what we're doing with SAD, with the buddy bench, which comes along with TLC, the horseshoe idea and stuff, so that was our global.
And then I think Tira?
Yeah.
And JT?
I can.
You can go now?
So when we were there, there's a lot of celebrities, a lot of known people there, and it must have been important for them to be coming there, I mean, it must be a big deal if they can get those people to come there, so they must be doing something, right? So, I mean, I think that we need to make it a goal to keep sending people back and taking back lessons from it, and I think I would love some.
Ryan, you want to go first?
No, I want to.
Hi, I'm Tira Stevenson, and I just thought We Day was an awesome experience, it was such an honor, we chose to go there, and I think one of the biggest things that really hit me was, I've always been like, okay, Tira, you're going to do this, and we're going to do this to help others, and we're going to change the world, and I've always had like this awesome passion inside of me, but then when I got there, and some of the 10,000 other kids who had that same passion as me, and the same will to change the world, it just opened my eyes, and I kind of regained my faith in humanity, that sounds really awful, but like just going there, I was able to see how many kids actually want to make a difference, and that there are so many people who care about today's society, and people in third-world countries, and just that care about everyone and everything, and so it was just awesome to see that I'm not alone, so.
My name's Ryan Desmond, and, well, Tira has a point, like going to We Day, it was like a big honor, like you were being, chosen to be a part of something, and that's really big, and from my point of view, from We Day, it's like all the speakers, performances, all that, it was like being a voice, a voice to those that can't have, that are afraid to speak out for them, and so in a way, the speakers, the war veteran in those most performances, in a way, they were speaking, being, being from the heart, really, and I kept, I really believed in that, because in a way, it's kind of like my, I speak from the heart, in a way, I speak my mind, and that's just how a We Day felt like in my, in my eyes, that we can't be afraid of what's going to happen to us, that's what you do, doing your life is what you're going to do, and people may have a disagreement of that, but that's their point of view, you have a dream, you should follow it, that's what I think We Day was about, is following your dreams.
Did the board have any other questions or comments from our We group that was chosen? It was a big honor for our students here at Angles to be chosen, to be able to participate in the We Day program, which shows how powerful their local project was. Which shows how powerful their local project was, which is our TLC program.
Someone over here, sorry, you didn't hear them, but that this happens every year, this? How, how many years has it been going on?
I think this is only like...
Just five years.
I think this is the second, second year. And we did apply for it last year and we were elected to, to be able to participate, but because we had more things that we could add, um, to our TLC program, which you guys have seen it grow over the years.
So the TLC program is what...
Is our...
...fought your way to this. So the better that program goes, the more...
And you have to apply each year?
I take, you would, I haven't seen anyone go, oh, it was okay. But, so I would assume that all of you feel the same way, doesn't it? That this is something you would want to do every year?
Yes.
Our goal is to get, um, the people that aren't in these groups to go do, so that whole school or whole grades can go and not just their...
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, it sounds amazing. It's, it's cool to be here watching you guys' faces. You can tell when kids, I have kids, you can tell with kids. You know when they're really just telling you what you want to hear. But I haven't seen that on any of you. All have that same wow look on your face. That's cool.
Very nice job, everybody, and thank you for joining us today. And if you can go ahead and head back to class. Uh, and if you're in high school, people advisory, why don't you move down? I'm gonna let you emcee our program today.
Alright.
Uh, this is our principal advisory. We, uh, we did get together. We have chatted about how the year has been going, et cetera. And there weren't any real large items that came about, so we have just some talk pieces. But we'd really appreciate if the board has questions or would like to hear about a particular thing, please, uh, put forth the question.
How about we raise our hand?
So... Roll's here.
And, or if you guys want to pass the mic over, you'd like to do it.
Just take it away, Sydney.
Okay, um, well, I'm Sydney Riley, and I guess, first of all, I'm just gonna kind of talk about the band choir trip that we took to New York. That was incredible. Like, my favorite part after the twenty-four hour bus ride, sitting, watching the snow fall and we were going like so slow, it felt like, getting there. And then we rode the subway to Times Square, walking up the stairs and looking up at all the lights in the city was breathtaking. So different from Haynesville. And it's... It just, it was such a great experience to experience city one, I guess. And I was just glad that, like, we had the experience to be able to do that.
Um, I'm Lexi Smiguit. I'll talk about our two college classes that are on the list, advanced bio and honors. Um, so this year was the first year advanced bio was actually college credit class. Um, I really enjoy it. Mr. Assison does a great job at incorporating the new technology in the classrooms. We have laptops now that we use, which is really cool because we used to have to go to the computer lab every day. Which, that's okay, but laptops are better. Um, but it's really good. It really involves medical careers that you could be going into in the future. So I've learned a lot more about those careers and paths that it can take to go there. Um, honors English, another form of class. Um, it's hard, but it's, it's totally worth it. Ms. Davy has a really good job at showing us how college is and the papers that we'll get. And she does a really good job incorporating it to the classroom.
Do you want to maybe take the microphone out and just say something?
Okay, um, I can talk about the German student visit because my family and I, we hosted two Germans and it was amazing. I absolutely loved having Germans and I definitely think that it's something that we should continue... That's so funny. Oh, having Germans. Um, but it's definitely something I think that we should continue to do because I definitely made two lifelong friends that I will continue to keep in touch with and that they are forever a part of our family. My family right now is working on a Christmas gift to send over there. And it was just an awesome experience to, um, to meet someone from the other side of the world and then have them stay in your home with you, which is really awkward at first. But then they just adapted so easily and it was so cool to just compare cultures, you know, just to have that little bit of experience. So I'd say definitely continue to do that because it really opened my eyes.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about the Veterans, the Veterans Day leader. Um, okay, so on Veterans Day, we went to, us as a Christmas advisory, went to the Legion and we served all the veterans that went and ate there, whatever. So like, my job was refilling all their coffee cups. That was a very, very hard job. Um, they drank a lot of coffee at that time. I was kind of amazed, like, they're, they're just, I don't know, they're just, you know, they're drinking. Just like the conversations that I got to have with them, you know, and stuff, like, I don't know, I guess some of the guys were just, they'd be like, oh, thank you. You know, they're just like so appreciated that, um, we came and like, we were like helping them, like, carried some of their plates. And I just thought it was really cool to, um, serve them in that way um, because of like what they did for our country and stuff and now we're giving back and as that generation. And it was just cool while I was pouring all their coffee cups. I got to talk to them like one-on-one a lot. This one guy who's telling me how he single-handedly won the Vietnam War and I was just like, you're crazy dude. But it was just, it was so cool just, um, when I came back and I was talking to Mr. K about it. I was like, oh yeah, I guess this guy told me whatever. And he was just like, Tatum, I bet you made that guy's day. And I was like, oh yeah, like I did. It was so cool. Thank him that way and stuff is cool.
Um, I'm gonna talk about homecoming and how it was really fun. Um, the, I thought that this year there was more, um, I don't know. We were able to like come together as a school and actually celebrate our school spirit and have fun at the game and everything. And the week we do like a whole kind of celebration thing, like, we had dress-up days and that kind of shows the school spirit and I thought it was fun.
The lunches, they're getting prepared for that. They, we had a meeting for books and discussed about, yeah, stuff, the food, or what we want or more, you want?
You don't want?
Yeah, or you don't want, want for that.
If you compare from a year ago and the food to now, is it better? Just not as good as you want? Or, so we have seen improvements?
So it's getting better with meeting with the lunch lady and having some more input?
Well, I was just going back to the Veterans Day thing. I know towards the end, I was, I was just in charge of the cake part, setting out a place, but I know at the end we were taking apart like the table, taking like all the stuff off of it. Um, Tatum was grabbing the coffee pots and stuff and then this guy that was sitting at the front table, I think for about half an hour that I was cleaning up tables or so. And then she sat there for that long coffee joint because every time I'd walk by, I think they were still talking. Yeah, so it was...
It's cool. He's awesome.
Yeah, I think, it was just really fun doing that because you just got to see like how many people actually did it from like around our area that went on about war and helped our country. So I thought that was really cool.
Alright, I'll talk about one of the classes I'd like to see be offered next year and to continue to have will be the study hall. I think if you use it wisely, it'll be a really good class to have instead of the strategy. And that's what I got.
I'm Grant Brooks and I'll go back to the Veterans Day thing. I was doing dishes and mostly the guys doing that and I appreciate guys doing dishes. Um, well, I just got to know one of us who likes to work in a restaurant, like, that kind of kitchen like I wanted to do, but...
Um, I guess one of the classes that I would like to see us have is a more of a, like a computer arts class, like animating, I don't know, some people are into those kind of, uh, I don't know, yeah, arts and stuff.
Alright, well, I'm the only one in here that's in our long class, so... Um, well, we, right now, tomorrow we have Jono Kendall, attorney, coming in. And she already visited us at once before the election. And then tomorrow she's bringing like, um, a couple of my clinic case in St. I happened to say a long time ago. And we're gonna review that and go through all that, so that's gonna be cool. And then next Monday, we are going to the Candy Eye County Jail to do her that, so that'll be pretty sweet.
You talked about that, didn't you, today?
Yep.
And that, and you come from the other side of the glass.
I would also like to see the study halls being continued because maybe some people don't use them, but I do. And I know there's a lot of people that actually make good use of them. And without that, like, I'm pretty sure I'd be struggling. Like, some of us have sports and we have to go to school, or not school, but um, work. And I work like five days a week and stuff and, yeah, it's just a lot. So I use those study halls.
Well, considering I'm the only one in here with line of trans, I suppose I'll start it off with, do you guys have any question, any questions of what we do with line of trans?
Yeah, what do you... Yeah, tell us.
Well, you know what, it's, it's a, um, we usually just start off the year, we take a safety test. We take all the safety tests of all the tools that we have in the shop. And we take the tool test to make sure we know what we're doing, what we know what we're using. And then usually it just kind of goes by, Mr. Gunther will have someone bring in a car. We'll change the oil on their car, do whatever they want us to do. And we do it for free, so we help people. Or you can bring in your own project, like, I've brought in a few of our family's cars, fixed up some stuff, brought them home. Or, um, Tucker Windroff actually bit off a huge chunk of something. He's, uh, restoring a car and we're all helping him out. Gunther's helping him learn how to do all this. So for people who want to go into auto mechanics and stuff like that, it's a great class and it counts as part of a shop time. If we would go into classes like this in college, Gunther, you can have Mr. Gunther sign off a thing that you have that's two hours less or two semesters less than a class that you have to take in college. And it's honestly probably one of my favorite classes of the day. It's fun to go out there, hang out with guys, work on cars and just be friendly with other people that I don't usually talk to during the day when I'm busy writing down notes and taking tests. But it's fun. Um, and Gunther keeps us like, uh, in line. We, some people take the class just to be an easy grade, but he usually doesn't let that happen. He tries to keep everybody in order, working, busy. So it's a good class that I hope I can take more of next year.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the New York trip. Um, I thought overall it was a great experience to be, see a big city and outside of small town Haynesville. Um, but I thought it was overall like a great way to bond with not only your grade but the students that went, um, for choir and band. And I thought like the teachers and the chaperones you got to bond with too.
Does the board have any questions?
Does everyone have study hall?
I don't.
No.
And I...
It's a choice. It's a choice. It's a choose to.
Um, I have no study hall this semester, but I do next semester, so I have seven straight classes. So it's a really big challenge, especially with the sports seasons. Because sometimes during the day you just need a break where I'm just like texting because I have so much going on in my life. So next semester I have it. I'm just really looking forward to a break. But I know I can't get my homework done and those two, so I like study hall, I guess. It's really okay.
Does it get utilized by everybody or is it kind of a slack time?
Um, I would say it's mostly utilized, um, kind of a percent.
Could you put it into a percent from what you basically?
I'd say, uh, I finished off a two-page paper that I had due today.
Could you guys be seventy-five, twenty-five, maybe twenty-eight? You guys are in there and I can watch this.
It kind of depends on the classes you have, right?
And the time.
Yeah, like the time of the year and stuff. Like, if you're a person who, if you have a lot of challenging classes, you're gonna use it a little more, um, you know, like, you're gonna use it more than someone who is just kind of taking... It's a slappy class, yeah.
Do you think that the study hall is something that when you're here from eight to three, that you need that time and the rest of what your day is, whether it be sports or something, dominate enough that without that time you would be short?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
I am sports, usually from nine. And you work from three fifteen to five in the neighborhood, either church or other stuff that I have to do.
Work.
It's work.
Other work, work.
Work, sports. Between all that stuff, I get what? Usually from about nine o'clock to eleven o'clock for homework. And then I usually have to wake up really early to get here to do other stuff. So I don't have a whole lot of time to do homework and I take two college classes.
Matthew, one thing that the board doesn't know a lot about yet and you've heard of it, I think, are you the only one?
Yes.
Um, can you mention the new student mentoring program a little bit?
Okay.
Maybe take the microphone. This is through our immigration grant.
We, I think there's about seven or eight of us that, we come in at about seven, seven-thirty and we tutor, um, depends on who it is. But we come in and we help anywhere from middle schoolers to our own classmates, our own peers. We help them, we tutor, um, and if all they need is a friend to help them get through their homework, we sit there, we talk, we do it, we help them out. And if it's more complicated, like they don't understand, we'll do something for them, we'll help them out, we'll like, we'll teach them. And we're actually employed by the school, correct? And we just signed all our papers for that, so we are technically representing the school of Haynesville. Um, I think it's something that we could get more people into because I know there's plenty of kids up there who need help, middle schoolers, high schoolers, either way. But, um, and I think it's just a thing where they come in saying that they need help. They have to come to Jackie and then she sets them up with one of us who she, who she thinks could help them best. And I know the kid who I work with, Elo, is coming in. He comes in as much as he can, as much as I have time for at least. And, um, I know it's not, it's not about me getting paid. That's just a bonus. I could do it without getting paid, but, um, because it's just the fact that I get to help somebody every once in a while, get their homework done, show them that other people here care. Because I know that some people struggle with getting to middle school, getting bullied and stuff like that. And it's no fun. So I think my main job is to come in, help them with their homework if they need it. But I'm just here to be an elder person who's showing them that I care. I'm someone who wants to come in and hang out with them. But yeah, we do homework and all that other good stuff and, anything else?
Do you think that all the kids know how to access that?
I don't, I don't know. We, have we put it out? No.
And we, we had it in the bulletin, but I think we just started the programs and now it's, it needs to evolve bigger and be promoted more. We just kind of got our mentors on board.
Wasn't there a peer tutor program at the high school?
We have, we have, uh, uh, okay, there's peer and mentor.
How does that differ from this?
Yes, we have peer and mentoring, which happens during the school day, which is a class that goes out to like the elementary or the middle school.
I thought...
And then we have, oh, okay. And then we have this class, or this program.
So we don't have that one-on-one, we don't have peer one-on-one during the school? It's always, we didn't stop them?
No, the peer, we do have that.
Not, we're not talking about the stuff that goes on to dead of school.
No, Jackie does line up students, still peer mentors during the school day. That can be one-on-one or you can go into a study hall, yeah, peer tutors during the school day. This is before school and after school, hopefully. That's what this program is. But it makes it was part of, yeah.
So do you still have?
Yes.
A lot. I'm just curious to see the difference because I would see, see that there'd be more kids would want access to someone before or after school than during the school.
And this is a program that we're just... And this is a program that we're just starting off with, so it was out in the bulletin, but that's all the promoting at this point we've done, but I think now that we're seeing it's being successful, that to get it out to teachers to identify students, and for students to come in and ask, I think, as a staff, we're looking at identifying more students that need it and then connecting with parents. But we've had our great, our peer mentors that have been coming in, and our peer mentors during the school day all do tremendous job.
So when you get something like this, you have TLC also operating, where all of you are really kinda trying to watch after the people around you and everything else like that. So this system for them to get tutoring could come from the TLC group too, right? So if one of these students saw somebody that was too shy to talk to somebody about it, they could tell somebody that this is available, and that's excellent.
How many tutors do we have at this point?
Right now, we have five that are actively working, we have two others that are signed up that we haven't had students identified yet. So right now, we're working on getting it out and identifying students that need help.
So you could potentially have a lot of tutors?
Yeah, and we, we have funding through the immigration dollars, we're up to ten mentor students. And one mentor student can take on more than just one student, right now, they're all one-on-one. Um, so, so we do have room for growth.
And the immigration plan is in place until two, twenty-seventeen. So we have these dollars available every year for the next few years, so as the, uh, as this program grows, we'll have dollars to enable the growth that will come out of our town a bunch.
And Jackie Campbell is our advisory advisor for the program. Anything else that anybody would like to add?
Can I say a few words? Um, it's very nice that you come. Um, I'm probably speaking for the rest of the board here. This is the most interesting, when you guys show up here to talk to us of any board meeting that we have. So a lot of our board meetings, we're talking about operations of the school and all other issues. But the whole goal of the school is you, and when you speak to us, we have at least an idea of what's going on, and I, I think I'm probably speaking for everybody, that you can't imagine how important it is that you come. The other thing I do want to say is there's a couple of issues that you asked about, one specifically. And I want you to know that even though sometimes we don't have an opportunity to come back to you on a specific issue, it's not that the board doesn't talk about it, it's not that it, it goes anywhere. For example, you, many times, and I know that I've seen you a few times, we talk about the courtyard, and everybody wondering why we can't use the courtyard. Well, our superintendent has worked on that, and we have followed up, so you brought it to us, we do a follow-up, and we find out we're up against a fire marshal issue and a safety issue. So, um, it's very much appreciated when you do that. Um, I was going through some of my notes from last year, there was a deal in there on the beautification of the bathrooms tied with an art class, did anything ever come of that?
We, we have the pictures, and we have the plexiglass. We are trying to figure out an artistic way to see the two plexiglasses as a frame, because we have a cleaning process that our custodians use, because they wash down the walls, so that they're still efficient and we can still put the artwork up. So Mrs. Waler is working on it, but we have the plexiglass cut to put the drawings in that the kids made, um, that were anti-bullying and accepting, and I think you guys saw several of them last year. So now we're just trying to figure out how the effectiveness of our cleaning staff to make their job similar and being able to put those up.
So that was brought up last year, a good example, um, you have talked about it. So what you're bringing to us isn't just going to deaf ears, we, it's very good that you come and speak with us.
Alright, thank you very much. If you would pass out or? Um, what I do is I have some students that have come and they, they ask to be on it. And then I ask for teacher recommendations, and then also I ask current advisory students for their input on students that would be good principal advisors, that would be honest and recognized, what's needed across the school. Um, and then from that, from the, those, I guess, nominations, then I look at it, and I try to have a cross-section, so that we have representatives from a lot of different groups, like some sports, you know, some kids that are in, um, music, some kids that really enjoy science, from different aspects of kind of the school community. And if somebody's asked to be on it, you have never turned them down, because we love all the input that we get, so. Alright, um, we have lots of new faces this time for our middle school principal advisory. And when we met this time, uh, because we were meeting with the kitchen staff, and they have limited amount of time, uh, we had had a whole group meeting with the high schoolers as well, and then we kind of stayed and talked as a middle school. Uh, so since this is your, a lot of, many of you, your first time talking with the school board, I, if you didn't get a sheet? Thought I passed them down, oh, they left them up there, can one of you, Sophie, can you grab those up there and pass them down to your roommate? Here are some talk comments that we talked about at our meeting, you can choose from that list, or you can choose something else that you'd like to tell the board about, if something's gone on this year in a class that you would like to share, or a concern, or something that you'd like to bring forward. Uh, we'd really like you to do that, so what I, what I'll have you do is let's hand the microphone down to Sophie, and she can start, introduce herself, and then maybe pick something to talk about from the beginning of the year to now.
Okay, I'm Sophie Strand, and, um, I think that technology, uh, out in classrooms is a good idea, if you have your iPhone or smartphone or whatever it is to be face-down on your desk and you can't touch it, I think that's a good idea. Because I like when you can use it for classroom uses, like if they tell you to look up something, 'cause I don't like doing that, having the ability to use it, but.
But recognize that maybe you can't be texting while the teacher's talking?
Yeah.
And then just pass it down.
Um, my name is Ryan Mercer, and I think that homecoming is good, how we have the breakfast, and how we all dress up.
Uh, I'm Jason Hough, and, uh, I would think that younger degree is really good, 'cause I can help senior citizens who can't really register as easily.
I'm Stan Sevons, and I like art because it's more of an open activity, and you get time to do what you have to do with your homework and stuff.
Um, I'm Josh Crans, and I like the seventh grade parties, 'cause it gives people that don't really get to hang out together as much, to hang out and just have fun and dance.
Um, I'm Chase Mansell, and, uh,
Hey, Bass. Bass, can you come back in the end, Chase?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm Newtany, and I think the homecoming is good, 'cause you gotta dress up, be on your hands.
And just so that you guys, you can talk about something that's been talked about, because you may have something to add. So just 'cause somebody talked about right day, maybe somebody has something that they would like to add on to.
I'm Rip Johnson, and, um, in advisory, we, we, those ten minutes, you know, I'm, I'm Mr. Wilers, and we check, we bring our phones or whoever into the class, and we look at our phone and show them, so it doesn't individually have to do it on the computer. And then we talk about news, and it's kind of just a break within the day, ten minutes, so, and we do, we'll get to it, so.
I'm Beane, and I like art, I think art's good because the homework that you get is, um, drawing and stuff.
I'm Ash the Top, um, I like advisor time, 'cause, yeah, it is a break, and, um, I think it's a good time to check up on your grades, 'cause you don't really have time to do that, like, during May, and maybe not really so much at home, you can do things.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm Kirsten Cable, and first round, um, practice for the MCA test was, um, good, because I liked how you had everything different than what we had during, in the years.
What was that, right?
Well, like, they had, I don't know, it's just like.
Is the program?
Yeah, the program.
Um, yeah, I want cookies at lunch.
Mine's for Fluff Strayden, and I like EST, because you have time to do your homework and stuff.
I'm Luke Johnson, and I, I'd rather, for the technology in classes, I'd rather have Chromebooks than, uh, iPads and stuff like that, 'cause they're easier to use and you can access stuff better.
Hey, can you tell me just a little more about that?
The Chromebooks are like little laptop kind of things.
Uh-huh, you find it easier to use, is it just faster?
Yeah, and iPads are confusing, they get messed up and stuff.
'Cause I've heard you talking in technology, and the technology, people talk a lot more about the Chromebooks now than we were about the iPad, so that's what driving it?
Uh, well, I think, you know, at first we had a card of iPad, because that's kind of what came out, and now it's become more of a teacher resource in our building, and we've gotten, we purchased a card of Chromebooks last year with the capital dollars, and that has made it through the classrooms between that and the laptops that are now in the college course. Um, students have, that was their input when I met with them earlier this month, was if they're gonna get technology in the classroom, the things that they would like is the Chromebooks, the more, finish out that card of laptops, 'cause we only have sixteen, so if you have a class, it's doubled up, and to improve our current computer lab situation, so that they're updated for more of a classroom type use, and have enough computers in there, so a whole class of twenty to thirty students can be in there. Uh, so that has been some input that we have received, now that we have the opportunity to use the Chromebooks, and I'm hearing that from principals across our area at this seven-twelve level, because of papers and the projects that they do, the Chromebooks, laptops, more computer-like devices are definitely more user-friendly and versatile for the classroom use.
And it's sort of maybe different between the secondary needs and the elementary needs?
Yeah.
But gentlemen, all of you kind of on the same page on the Chromebooks? So easy to use, easy to accessible, you can get what you need done on them, very good.
I'm Ken Spanner, and I was in the PLTW class, and I think it's really fun to, like, design stuff on the computer and stuff.
I'm Tanner Stanley, and the Chromebooks are, like, way easier, because if you, like, type up, like, a paper or anything on the iPads, it's, like, very touchy, you know, a Chromebook, you can, like, just type whatever you need, just like on the computer.
Um, I'm Jess Anderson, and I think the community right there is fun, but it needs more efficiency, because we got left behind twice in our advisory group. First, when they didn't give the announcement to the high school area, and second, when they said the bus is wrong. So we were sitting there for a good half an hour, forty-five minutes, and then it got kind of lunched, and everything just got really backed up for us.
Um, I like that, that they have banned music, like, 'cause it gives a chance for kids to do something and to have something, like, it gives them a good opportunity to open up their, to, I don't know.
Try something different?
Yeah.
So everybody having fun that's in band and choir?
Yeah.
Good, good, music will last you for the rest of your lives.
Uh, does the board have some questions for our middle school advisor?
I hear we like cookies, is there any comments about lunches at this level?
They're too, they're too short for lunchtime. You'd like more open gym time?
It seems like some of the meals aren't filling enough.
Yeah, they're not pretty much filling up sometimes.
How long do you guys have lunch?
Half hour.
Half hour. Compared to last year, are the meals better or?
Little bit better.
I feel like.
A little bit?
Yeah, they changed, I don't hold on every day.
They taste better, but still not enough, is that?
Uh, just so you have a little idea, that it's a concern of all of ours, that we're home hungry. But there's a, an entity called the federal government that has some rulings over the top of this, so we are doing our best, and all of the staff in the school and everywhere doing the best to fit within those parameters. So, um, some of the reading I've done recently, um, they're aware of it, so you may see some of that change federally even so, so that will be helpful to everybody. And if you really want a project, if I would urge you to write a letter to the Secretary of Agriculture, 'cause that's who's in charge of that whole program, and tell them what you think of your lunches, 'cause, um.
Tell them how much I like going home hungry every day.
Yeah, so, and then I want to take a minute, just like I did with the group before, um, I'm gonna speak for the whole board, hopefully, and I did talk to them beforehand, but we really appreciate when you come and talk to us. What you say is really important. We have board meetings, most of them are at night, and we talk about a lot of things, and we have lots of reports that we hear, but this is the only time that we hear from students. And all this going on here, the only reason any of us are here is to help with, um, what your education is as a student. And we thank you a lot for doing what you're doing on this council, and telling us what's going on.
You're very brave. I'm very old, but I do remember being your age, and it's tough to talk to a group like us sitting up here. But the thing is, if you're, if somebody's not willing to tell us how you guys feel, we don't know. And so we need to know that, so, no, I would like to thank you, Jenelle, and you for having the guts to do it, 'cause there's a lot of, a lot of kids your age that just can't talk to adults, good for all of you.
So we look friendly here, don't you think? Do we look like a friendly group?
Yeah.
And I'd like to, uh, I appreciate you guys' inputs, and welcome to all our new members, Kay. Uh, what I'd like you to do now is if you can pass your, um, name tags this way, and put your sheets at one of the ends down there, I thank you very much. You can return to, you're gonna have to probably hit right between seventh and eighth hour, so why don't you head down first to the middle school and just see where you're off, okay? The bell's gonna ring in a few minutes. Thank you.
You're kind of the next on the list, we're jumping around, but again, this is the most important, to listen to the kids.
And usually this meeting and one at the end, I go, the, the students do most of my report. Uh, I would like to say we have started the OPA testing in both the math and the English. And as you've heard, the math program, the kids are seeing a little bit different, but they, they like it better. So hopefully, the changes that they've seen will help their performance. Um, I do know the seventh grade, there was a lot of information there that they haven't had yet, on slope and some things, but they're all things that Mr. Spanner expected, so we'll be seeing again, uh, so we'll look at that data. Uh, the other thing is the Adman Fellow Group out of Hutchinson and Haynesville nominated Jacob Dahl as a student that they are going to fund to go see the United Nations program for fourteen days. They're fully funding him, he gets to, uh, participate in a lot of the different lobbying, and they, it's behind the scenes, and then, uh, there's students from all over the world that will be attending along with him. So that, uh, program and association is going to be sending one of our Haynesville students, and this is the first time in, I think they mentioned, like, over fourteen years, one of our students were nominated. So, uh, that was a great honor for, for Jacob. And with that, any questions that you might have for myself?
We do have a question. I hope you have a question of some sort. When we were listening to the kids talking, their students talking, we were, last discussion was on the Chromebooks, but when the older kids had their project lead the way, they commented how nice it was to have laptops.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess my only thought is I think when we go to a technology committee in my country on that, that maybe they're, I would hopefully not hold in Chromebooks ultimately through high school if they're finding eleven grade that laptop is something.
Yep, I think we're, you're going to see a variety when we look at this building. We're looking at four, four to five carts in this building. I think we'll see a variety depending on what the department area is and the age level. The Chromebooks we could not use for the project lead the way courses because they do not have a big enough processor to deal with some of the programs and things that they're connecting to.
Her interesting comment to me was that she had access without trying to get to computer lab.
Yes.
So it was kind of related to what was going on, but my implication was that we really need to be looking hard at that with these bands that they have to make sure we fill whatever needs there.
Right, and then the other pieces, some of the social studies teachers have also indicated they would really like to see something like a NOOK for their class that would have just their textbook, just their, the different books that they read for their class and that would be like a class set in their classroom instead of continuing to purchase books, et cetera. And to have it all in one thing where they wouldn't have the resource of the internet available to you, to them. So looking at what the students want, what the students will utilize and also what the department or our teachers would see as facilitating their program the best, I think what we will end up in this building is seeing a variety of different types of carts and looking at putting them in a kind of a priority as far as how we'll bring them in. So I think as I continue to talk with teachers and students and our technology committee is looking at all of that as far as our overall plan. So that's been a big discussion the last two months over here in this building.
Certainly one-to-one initiatives, that's part of the benefit for it is because in word electronic media versus buying textbooks, I think at least to my opinion, and yet we'll have discussions with the set of technologies, we're not there yet, we have a lot of training into a staff, but there is pieces that we can do now. We could have classrooms have a set of it, have electronic pieces, maybe still have paper copies of some things so that if kids don't have electronic piece of equipment they can use at home and they still have the ability to have the paperwork. So I think as this unfolds, we want to do it right and certainly that will mean looking at all various types of technologies and keep in mind, things that we think are really the best right now change very quickly in that field.
And I think that's where some buildings, we're talking to some of the different people that we've talked with as far as even the camera security.
Little following students, please come to the office. Andrew West, Thomas Coakley, Hannah Lake, Hunter Boss, Sage Stevens, Tanner Shaker, Adam Stevens, Mackenzie Hines, and Nicole Hislop. Also Stephanie Beerman and Gray Tupper and Kayla Shaker, please report to the AGRM. Thank you.
Some of the buildings that have done though, one-to-one and just one straight piece of technology for everybody at this point are looking back, wondering if that was the right thing to do.
Example, the very discussion we've had right now where everybody got an iCap. Well, I think part of what they're finding out now is that that necessarily may not meet the needs of the older kids, for instance, on what they really need to have for technology use. So we want to be very careful with this as we unfold this and we want to use the dollars that we've graciously gotten from the community to make sure that we do it in an appropriate manner. And I think that deals with our technology committees, both at the, at all schools plus our district technology committee to really plan and make sure we do it appropriately.
A few years ago, an instructor told me about one of the textbook costs and I thought he was talking over a hundred dollars for a textbook. And so when we start combining technology for everybody at home that is looking at this new world, it's a cost-effective method of giving our kids information.
Well, it is and it isn't because you still have to have that copyright, even if it's electronically. So they're finding out it's not, maybe not as, it is not as expensive, but it's, it's still.
Although there are some consortiums now that are maybe in their own curriculum. So they won't even go through the major textbook companies.
You look at our project lead the way program, you know, we need to provide the technology, the laptops and they're usually fairly high, it's a high-powered processor to run their program, but we don't provide books for that program. That is totally an online program. So although we're putting the money into the laptops, which will, you know, hopefully last seven plus years, but we are not putting money into the textbooks. It's part of the license, which is almost three thousand dollars a year. That is the sole cost of the textbook for that course on a yearly basis. So, you know, so you really got to look at it and look at your long-term plan, technology plan, curriculum plan, what do you want to get out of this piece of electronics? So it's a good discussion.
Well, it was very fun because it came up, both groups of students talking about technology. So I think as a board and getting behind this issue, I think is a very good thing.
Any other questions or I'm going to go relieve Dawn and also she can present on the world's best workforce.
Oh, she does that, Matt?
Okay, I'll go up here quick. Winter's going well so far. We've got quite a bit of activity like we usually do in our fitness center. I'll be launching a new workout for brand new members here in the next week or two. I posted a BNC TV episode today, so I'll send you an email on that. Pause has been going really well and we're actually beginning to plan for the summer all-day camp already for that, so. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Activities director, Max.
Just recently completed our fall schedules for next year and kind of feel like I'm learning all over again because we lost a lot of our previous non-conference opponents with the new conference, but we're able to secure a pretty good schedule, I think, and maybe evolve as time goes on and we're able to work things out. But I'm very pleased with that. I'm currently working on next winter's schedule, same thing, following that almost all of our non-conference wrestling opponents are in conference, which I guess would make sense as to why we were interested in that conference, right? But we're, so we're just going to work through that. Something you should be aware of, Minnesota State High School League, the transgender policy that they have proposed did pass. Basically, the steps that would take and how it would impact our school if a student that believes that they have a consistent gender identity different than the gender that they're assigned that would have to give a written notice to our school. We wouldn't make any determination on that, send it on to the State High School League. They have officials that would deal with that as well as the final decision being an independent hearing officer and then the State High School League Board of Directors would have authority to approve or not the findings there. Directly impacting our school basically, and as far as activities go, it would be the exact same management as if we had to manage it in any other situation. If a student was in our school and if I had, how would you handle that? So great one for me, you guys have to figure out someday, but you know, at least we have a policy and as far as the activities go for participation as well. Because of the question number one passing, we're working on securing a track resurfacing project to be done so we can get that done this summer. There's quite a number of cracks that are under. Also be aware of our conference, I'm waiting actually, I thought maybe today I would hear back, but sometime this week I think I'll hear back as far as the possibility for our gymnastics to join the rest of the schools that are in central Minnesota that have gymnastics are paired with the Granite Ridge Conference. Looks like it would be a great fit for us. I should find out about that. And then dance team will find out in February. The thing about the dance team is compared to the other ones, they have one meet, so it's really a lot easier and simple to join a conference because you're not getting a schedule of a whole bunch of events that other schools then need to include you and it counts against the number of contests and dates they can have, whereas gymnastics, we kind of need to have that answer. Now, because we're working on those schedules, if we tried to join a conference in the spring for gymnastics, we would never, unless we were currently already scheduled with those schools, it would be virtually impossible to. We have a triple A banquet coming up in January and otherwise it's just two, three, even four nights a week at school. Tonight we have gymnastics, hockey and girls' basketball and dance teams performing at girls' basketball going on here, so. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
You can just. Can we drop Matt or I'm sorry?
I think, come on now. Building their ground supervisor.
I've been working with a few companies trying to get some specs drawn up for a stage back system. Not getting too far with that yet. I'm also working, started to work on roof specs. We have one company out there that's interested in looking, but here's a lot of snow on the roof, it's kind of hard to tell where our problems are right now, so I'm not sure how far we'll get. I have a three-year asbestos inspection coming up here in December and we hope to find all the rooms that we are going to put tile in. A lot of the rooms, I shouldn't say a lot, there's a few rooms with carpet over old tile and I'm sure it's asbestos tile, I think it is, we're going to have that checked out to see which rooms were.
That'll all be in your management reports.
We found out that one room wasn't.
But that should be there.
Ninety percent of the time the tile adhesive on the tile, that's just pretty much.
Kind of got caught with one this summer that was.
Yeah.
And we just want to make sure that we're accurate on this.
Right, yeah. And he'll be going through that over the Christmas break. And I'm also working with two companies on cost of tile and carpeting. We are in carpeting couple areas. Imagine one would be the elementary school library.
Yeah, typically the areas that remain carpeting that we'll look at are the media centers and then we have a request for a choir room in the elementary that we keep carpeted there. They have the kids laying on the floor or sitting on the floor a lot, movement and it's also a matter of just kind of sound peace, not bouncing all over the place.
And the last thing we take into account on putting another set of doors in by the elementary school office for security reasons, that they have to come in, go into the office, check in and then come off behind them. Quote on that was about twenty thousand dollars, so.
It'll be a discussion after, buy your plan for capital. You know, if you don't have that amount put into the project, but it might be something when you start looking at security and buildings that we might want to do in and we will have some additional account with all our street office because we were, we were able to get question one.
Other than that, smaller is my phone.
I've got a question. Who does it through your?
Used to be Terrick, but it turned, it changed companies. I always said something, I used to do what I, I'd have to.
And then, you know, you're still required for six months?
Yes. Every six months.
Yeah, I got a lot of, but I'll. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
I think maybe the staff, we have to get the PowerPoint up here once.
Okay.
So it's like staff development and then December fourth, um, whole business was some tech folks developing this support staff recognition. Dave Darica, there's a lot, we don't recognize that. And there was a survey, send out, what happened was there's a, through resources, we send people to, the teacher, teachers, two pairs and we missed the support staff one. We, the district, the district vice development. So they wanted to do something for, and they want to do that in-house instead of just to recognize outstanding workers in the school district. And they do a lot of stuff on surveys now, the email surveys.
Survey monkey.
Survey monkey, which is amazing because you don't have to wait for six weeks or someone tabulated, it's like instantly. New business, they talked about the in-service for March twenty-fourth. Dave Stems, who was going to, they're a C book in Hinnaburg, two to three hour mental health presentation, which is.
And we're going to, we're going to be able to get him in, but we're going to move the days now, explain that.
Okay.
The snow makeup day, so I'll get, when I get my reports.
Remember this was December fourth, so there's been stuff going on.
There's a change of sentence in as far as snow makeup day.
But the mental health piece also, isn't that part of their continuing ed?
Correct.
For their license.
Yep.
And then the tall cop thing is still.
I think we can kind of talk a little bit about that during my report also, but it's a staff development where police are going to come in and it's a drug education piece. We're looking at, I think, March twenty-fourth. The trouble is we don't know what kind of snow days we will have. We're going to try to keep that free and what has happened is that Lori was able to work with them and we're going to have it available to us, we're going to do it here. So if we don't have a snow day that day, then we'll be able to incorporate that program. We're also trying to set something up in the evening for possibly parent education on this.
This, this whole project, this whole process was like Painesville would be the hub and there would be, so that other schools could come here to do, to see this presentation. And it's supposed to be an entire community thing, it's not just educating the school, it's educating the community at large, not just our community, since I think to other schools would be other communities also.
Probably want to send it, if we do this, we probably want to send it from something south to our community because we could have twenty to thirty police cars in our parking lot at that time. So we might want to inform the community about that, know there's a reason that they're there.
And we got a quick, well, I got a quick look and Dave Darica, Colin, there's a gentleman, Colin Wolf, who built us a webpage, a district wide. Well, when I went to the district wide webpage and to pull up my, for my meetings, it's now says, there's a little pupil sign there, it says, we outwrote our website. Well, he kind of showed the start of it at this meeting and now it's even bigger than it was then. He's developed it so that it's more user-friendly for the teachers. Not only does it have district staff information on there, it's got tabs for continuing ed, community ed.
Technology.
Technology.
They're going to add it to that so we can start putting things on the website for that also.
So that they have one, one click access to all kinds of stuff. And that's all I have to say. Goes in and.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to go up to number five of business for the world's best workforce presentation.
It almost seems.
So do we, do you want us to move around?
Yeah. It's like every time I come to. I'm hoping about ten minutes. And so how many, the presentation, ten minutes, then we're going to have a question.
Okay, we've got some things on agenda, we're going to make sure we accomplish all the board members are here and some have a mandatory class deadline or five too.
We know that I can talk fast.
Why not?
All right, we have been tasked with doing the world's best workforce and integration plan and I'm just going to give you an overview of it. One of the things that we have been working on is coming up with a plan that we've seen some of, Bob has presented it at the school board and we have to get a report that goes into the state and they've kind of set a really vague deadline. So I'm going to give you an overview of where we're at. You do have a handout that's there that is going to show you some of the information that we have accumulated to do this. First of all, it's based on legislation that came about, state statute twenty, one twenty B point one one says that every school in the state needs to come up with a plan that's says, we are not only dealing with the academic needs of our individuals for the school board requirements for graduation, but the goal is that we have kids that are ready to go to college, and or ready to go into the workforce. And every school in the state of Minnesota is required to do this, and it's leaving it once again from MDA, MDE, up to the schools to come up with how they're going to present it. You know, if they give us that wonderful blueprint, we'd be pretty good. This presentation, Bob has a copy of it, he'll probably send it out to all of you.
I can send it out to all of you, and we'll also be posting it to the website.
So it talks about it, and it is addressing pre-kindergarten all the way through grade twelve. When we look at it, here's the areas of emphasis. The state says there are five things that we have to make sure that we're doing as checkpoints. All children ready for school, that would be our kindergarten readiness. All third graders can read at grade level. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for career in college, and all students graduate from high school. The word "all" has gotten the government in trouble before. And as we are doing this, one of the things that we need to look at is "all" doesn't necessarily mean one hundred percent. The big thing that the state says is, we have to close our gaps. So we got to figure out our starting point, and then how we're going to close each of those, and move towards that one hundred percent. Not necessarily that we're gonna get there, because we know that there are going to be individual needs and individual characteristics of students that make that one hundred percent very, very difficult. And it's kind of that ideal that the government puts up. When we look at it, we have our system that we identified as a committee for what we were going to take into consideration, figure out what we're gonna do. Achievement gap reduction, that's what we do with the MCAs, and looking at those subgroups. Special ed and free and reduced lunch are our typical groups that we look at. Kindergarten readiness, we have a kindergarten roundup checklist, but we're, we're a little bit sketchy as far as deciding how we determine if our kids are ready for kindergarten. That's something we're gonna focus on. Our literacy level for the third graders, we have read well by third grade, a plan that's in place, and we're gonna do some benchmarking with the MCA, benchmarking with our star reading and the MCA reports. Students in career and college readiness, looking at the senior exit survey, their financial aid, also making it a progressive program that comes in, and looking at the explore the plan aptitude tests, our career readiness, or careers class, all of those different measurements. Looking at the multiple measurement report, which I talked about before, for our graduation rate, and the state figures it out on a four-year average, and then our explore the plan tests that are coming in. We've talked about creating vision cards, that's what you have in front of you. That's our two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year information and identification. The colored areas are where we're at. If we were having any in Level One, it would be red, we don't have any red flags, which is a really good thing. Yellow is kind of passion, orange is, we're working on it, green, we're progressing through at a rate where we should be, blue would be the vision on what we want to do. We're going to make sure that we collect this information annually and update that, and it's an accountability check to make sure we're doing the things that we're supposed to. We look at it, and these were some of the goals that we are putting into our plan, that we need to consider based on the two thousand thirteen, fourteen information. Our reading proficiency at all grade levels, we need to look at, they changed the test on us, and it is more stringent, so we have to empty on that a little bit. Reduce, reduce the achievement gap, our two big populations are going to be with our special ed population versus our non-special ed population. We do not have as big a gap as many other schools, but it's still bigger than we'd like it to be. Our free and reduced lunch population versus our free and reduced, non-free and reduced lunch population, our reading scores are very close there, so we've done something there, but our math scores, we have too big of a gap. We need to, as I said earlier, we need to figure out how we could have data measured to make sure we've got kindergarten readiness, rather than it just being an age thing, and we have some of those things in place, but we don't necessarily record them, and then review of their readiness throughout high school, starting in grade, grade nine and working on up, that they have a high school plan to go. These are the things that we already had in place, that we just needed to pull together. Lots of them that you may have been involved in on committees and coming up with them, were Title One Plan, Elementary Literacy Plan, the SIP Plan, Curriculum Review Cycle, not gonna read the whole thing to you. The one that we're working on, coming in, new teacher evaluation program, integration plan is new, principal evaluation program is, is new based on other legislation that we have. The integration plan...
Yeah, this is the first year that we've had it.
And we'll let Bob take care of this portion.
Yeah, this is the first year that we've had it, so it's hard for us to get any kind of feedback at this point, because our plan hasn't completed, and we're just putting it in place. So first year we've had it, it's really to increase student achievement, close the achievement gap between student groups again, and for us, it can certainly be special ed, but it's also our free and reduced population in comparison to our non-special ed and non-free and reduced population. And again, we need to start analyzing the data that we get in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, test scores help us determine the impact of the program, and make any adjustments that we may need to make. Just an update on what we've done, the integration plan at the secondary, Lori's already talked a little bit about that. We've just got about five student mentors that may have increased since the data that I got. They need two to three times a week, either before or after school. They're serving about ten students right now, and certainly, we want to increase that. The program is just starting, we're getting a, feet on its ground, and we hope to have many more by the time this is all done. As I mentioned, we have three years to really continue to work on this program, and then we'll most likely reapply for the integration funding again. We have coordinator in place for that program, we're identifying students that are in need of extra assistance, and we're gonna hope to continue to expand that as needed. And so that's where we're at with high school. Lake Obegon Collaborative Elementary School Theater Camp, this was really a unique piece on, I hope to have Jennifer Wurst come out, she's the one that really has put an immense amount of time in this program to put it in place, and I'd like to have her come to the board and just give you a much more thorough explanation on everything that took place. But it was a partnership with Marrows Area Schools, because they're the isolated district that we needed to be next to in order to be able to get the funds, that's why we've never been able to do it. The isolated district used to be Longbury, Gray Eagle, I believe, so we weren't adjacent to that, so we could never access integration funds. We're able to do that now, that's why these programs can be put in place. For students who potentially have not reached their, their full potential because of economic, economic disadvantages, learning difficulties, social stressors, those types of things. Those are the students that we focused on for this program. I had six students from Elros, twenty from Payneville, good start to this program, we plan to put it in place again next year. It's designed with Minnesota standards for literacy, math, and art mind. It was really a theater camp that integrated all of those things into the program. I believe it was just an outstanding program for our students. I think we'll start to get more students from other districts because of the way the program went this year. Increased student behavioral skills also, there's a lot of things they do that work on the behavioral skills of students during this program. They worked with Great Children's Theater, Chan Hansen Dinner Theater, to provide students with the theater experience that also increased student achievement, literacy in math and in art. And they went to a live performance at the end of the program, also in Chan Hansen. It was really, well, they had, they went to a live performance in Chan Hansen, but they also did a live performance here in the district, and I've got a couple of pictures that we'll, we'll just show that. One is certainly, they worked on more than just the theater aspect of it, but as you can see, the right picture certainly shows that they also have their own theater piece with this, and then when Jennifer comes in, I'm sure she'll add much more on this particular project, but I, I turn, I, I thought it was just a fascinating project, the way that they incorporated math, literacy, and art into theater. I thought it was just outstanding.
Their performance was through the lupus, it was Charlie and Jaco Factory, it was phenomenal. I, you know, spent the forty-five minutes and went to it, and it was, it was great. I think Ben was Charlie, so...
I was so happy we kind of didn't relax.
Yes, it was, it was very good. The last thing that we have here are just the actual links to the cheats that you had, and these are gonna be in, it'll take a moment to come up with. This is the information that we will be including in, in the report, whatever, and I printed them because I figured this might happen. It shows us what we're looking at as far as measurements. At the elementary level, as I said, if we were at Level One and we had any of them here, they would be filled with red. Red would be, we need to address this immediately and take care of it. If you look at all three grade levels, middle, elementary, middle school, and high school, we don't have any red flags, which is a very good thing for us. Level two, we have to find a date and focus on it, that's where we need to do some fine tuning. We do have some yellow, not in elementary school, but in the later ones, when we look at the middle school and high school, and one of the big things that comes up with that is, the rigor increases with all the testing and all of the measurements that we have. So ensuring that our students are getting the academics for it and being able to apply it. In the next column, that it says progress needed, we're about where we should be, but we can't be satisfied, and that's gonna be the orange color, green, that's a good to go, but once again, just like when we were in award school, we can't say we stopped, and we're happy to be there. We want to progress so that that all term becomes something that we're going to be able to be very, very proud of. We figured out the progression for these across the board by using a chart that comes from the Minnesota Partner of Education, it's called the attainable goal sheet. Some person that has much more statistical information than I do, and she's been there for thirty years, but retired in October, came up with the sheet that is very specific, you plug in numbers as far as where you are and what you should expect to gain. That one is the elementary one, you have the middle school and the high school one, I don't know that I've pulled them up. If you have any questions about them, right now, I'd be willing to answer them, if you have any that as you're looking at it later, anybody on the committee, which would be Bob, myself, and the other principals, plus some business people and some parents, probably the four of us, Bob and the principals and myself, better to look at the charts and give you an explanation of what's involved with them, but it gives you that information. Also, I think that Bob is planning on sending you the link to our report that's going to the state, and one of the big things that's nice in that is they're not making us do a paper copy, so we didn't have to kill a bunch of trees, and we're able to just put some links into that one, and that one's available, we've got a couple little tweaks yet to finish on it, but I think that we're planning on having it done by the end of the week.
Yep.
And that's what I have for you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for us now?
From the public. Then, we have a couple of members that need to get away pretty fast, so maybe all of us could go down and remain steady, and Bob, I'm gonna turn it over to you for a moment, if you could follow what you're gonna do with the report.
Do my report real quick and then get off?
Yeah, do your report, last, and take some time.
Oh, you want me to do my report?
Later.
Later, okay.
Afterward, I'm restful, safe to report.
All right. My report isn't very long, but at the same time, I do have something under there that I think's important. I want to take this time to thank board members Deb and David. Deb's been around for twenty-one years on the school board, David's been around for ten years, so that's him on the service that they provided to the public. Being a school board member can be complex, challenging, and a thankless job at times. After all, you can't seem to make everybody happy all of the time. But being a board member is an extremely important position, you do the most important work in our community, which is that of educating our youth. We have a couple of plaques that we put together for the board members that are exiting, I'll just read them. Just, "School board members are the dedicated few who represent our community's values and thinking about public education in our community." The bottom line for these individuals is keeping alive the dream of public education for every child, and making sure students achieve and succeed. We'd like to thank you for your commitment to high standards of achievement, support of district employees, and responsible leadership for the school district. On behalf of our students, parents, staff, community members, and other board members, we very much want to thank you for your years of public service to District 741, and wish you the very best.
Okay, now, we've got a couple that need to get away very quickly. It's external business day, just so for the public at home.
Okay, just a couple things, Donnie talked a little bit about the building project. Snow makeup day is just to be aware, students will not have school on January second. It was a snow makeup day, not the best day, I put it in there just in case we were going to get tons of snow makeup, that we had to do at that time, but we did talk with staff, and although it was quite a very, very slight margin, we are going to have Staff Development Day on January second, because we're going to move the snow day to January twentieth, which was the school in-service day, paid for staff. We're gonna move the in-service day to January second versus the end of the school year, because, partly because the staff voted on that, partly because that's the best place to have it, because they can use the information in staff development then for the remainder of the year. And then I will truly hope that I don't have to make any more calls out to the public concerning snow days. So that's kind of where we're at right now at this particular point, and then we'll have the staff to wait and see. Reports to the board, just a reminder, just sent out a quick email asking you to stop into the business office, there's a few reports there we want you to look at, at the next agenda, on our next board meeting, I'm gonna, on the agenda, I'm gonna have reports. I just want you to look at it so we can probably discuss them a little bit more soundly, on what we want to have in the packet, what we don't want to have in the packet for board members. So just stop in, take a look, and then it'll be agenda at the next meeting. Arrumens, stayed pretty consistent, we're up right now two in ECSE, we're up one in K through six, but we're down two in seven through twelve, so we've been pretty stable for, for the main year, although I must say, there's been ins and outs for that. A couple other things, calendar, on Wednesday, I meet with the staff just for our first input for the calendar meetings after school tomorrow. It's really just the start of it for the fifteen, sixteen school year. And remember, that fifteen, six school year is a little different, and that Labor Day is real late, it is on September seventh, all right? So I am going to talk with some community members, and it doesn't look like right now that the state will come forward with a motion to allow us to start before Labor Day. It just doesn't look like it's gonna happen, but they do have a procedure that I'm just starting to track down that would allow us to do it anyway. I think we need to be aware of our people on businesses that are affected by starting school too early, but at the same time, I certainly would like to start, at least in the start of September. If we could do that, we could get four days in before Labor Day is started, we could even give students, you know, more time off if we want to do that, just get two or three days in. I'll get some input from the staff, I'm gonna want to get input from the community as we go down that road, so we'll probably have a couple meetings for community members to come in and talk to us about it before we do that. It seems like a fair thing to the community and our resort owners and people that are affected by the start of school early, then I'm certainly gonna come back to the board and say, this is really what I'd like to do, because it does free up our calendars tremendously to be able to get a few days in before. Otherwise, we're going into June, starts getting hot at that time, not always the best time, although it can be hot at the start of September too, but that's at least my intent right now. I will have a couple calendars put together. One is if we don't start before Labor Day, and one is if we do start before Labor Day. So just be aware of that. I have a couple committees to set up that I will, Financial Committee, and also by your capital plan committee, I'll be getting those going right after the start of the beginning of the year. All right, other than that, that's what I have. Questions for me?
Yeah, a question for the board chair. Since this is my last meeting, and we did do the delegate assembly, and I'd like three minutes just to...
Go ahead.
I knew it wouldn't be on the agenda, but we did, Minnesota Delegate Assembly was December seventh, and we did meet, and I brought you the book. There was a very interesting meeting the first day before we actually had the assembly and voted on it, and I brought the thing, so I remember the calendar name, and she did a, her whole presentation was on, does school board leadership matter? I'm gonna leave this with Todd, with Bruce, Bruce, yeah. Gross, yeah. Um, I should probably add that the district ought to be better, there's, uh, connection websites and stuff to get the information, but it was on, um, a lot of money has been spent on figuring out what makes better school boards, what information areas they should have or, um, even things like, which I would have argued with as to whether, we've had those discussions about whether to have, um, elections on the same as the general meetings or not, or general elections or not. Lot of really good information in there though. And, um, the other thing that I'm, that I've already given to Bob is the tool belt of information where we need to get all communities involved more in public education before it gets landed. There's a news release for our press guy there, who's not even listening. And then I also have a new, uh, directory for, um, all of Minnesota's so that you have connection as to who you want, who you want to call if you have a legislator, here's where you do that. There was a couple of, um, resolutions that I had starred that were more concerned to our community that I wanted, um, the one that meant the most to me because we're also part of the C organization, which was, which was helped develop this one, is the, to increase the equalization for districts receiving less than the state average. And that one passed really well. There was also the one discussing that, that whether or not the, um, they were going to lobby to do the three-day school break preceding Labor Day and that one failed. And, um, the teacher evaluations and ongoing funding for it is another thing. These are just things that they've, that we as members of this organization want these lobbyists, because that's basically what Minnesota School Board Association is. One of their main, main jobs is to lobby for what we want as school boards. And the thing that they're going to lobby for, and I think it's either one or two, because it's on the press release, um, is for funding to go with these teacher evaluations, you know, to, for the process itself because they keep giving us all these things that we need to do and we need to, to improve ourselves and improve training, but they don't ever take any money along with it. Which leads me to the last thing that I wanted to tell you about and that was the land trans, or land trust monies. Um, I came back, well, we all heard about it, that, uh, the school board convinced they had the gal speak on it one time, but, um, Minnesota as a state, when it became a state, one of the regulations was, or in order to be a state, you had to prove that you could provide for anything that you had in your constitution. The only thing that we had was transportation and education. So there's millions of acres of land that belongs to the schools because you had to validate, you had to prove that you had enough, a way to make enough money to whatever the schools needed to support the schools. I've yet to find out when or why it ever got switched over to the DNR, convinced anyone it was in the DNR, but they're not working in our best benefit. States around us are still supporting their schools strictly on the land money. Our governor chose to ignore it. It was two years ago that it first came up and it was, this is already in law, so we need to re, this, there's no place in law where it was taken out, so we need to put it back in. There was a head person that was supposed to be in charge of a group of people that represented each of the areas. Um, that was done, then he didn't do, nothing happened. The next year, it was hire this person. Although, I guess the first year was because the, the law's there, but there was no money allocated to it. No money switched hands, they were gonna take it away from the DNR, whatever. Well, then they said you have to hire this guy and they allocated the money for it, but yet he still hasn't hired anyone yet or appointed it because that's how it all got started. This person has to be appointed and then he can get the other people. So that went to the vote and that one went really well too. That was passed. I wrote it down, I, because as many years as I've been going down to the just delegate assembly, I've never once seen a totally unanimous vote. Even for, I think if you voted for free air, somebody would vote no. There's always, always one and that one, I'm a chicken. That's true. But it was almost, it was the closest to a hundred percent I'd ever seen. Ninety-seven to three. So, yeah, so, and that. But this is just the vote. It all, it has all the resolutions that we voted on. I wrote the, um, outcomes on them. I will leave it with Mr. Quid, so you can have it. See how it is?
And I will pass it on to whoever the committee member will be for that.
Um, it's not actually a committee member, you have to be elected, elected to this position.
So you have to ask.
Back in the day, Morin Dozdo conned me into going, and I have his permission to say this, conned me into going to a meeting with him about this. He was the delegate assembly person for him. And then I think he just felt that he was getting up there and that they needed someone younger, ha, ha, I was the younger one and so.
So we would have a discussion with the board about somebody applying to be a member?
I would really like it because otherwise there are, there, Paintsville has had representation in, in District Twenty-One, which is what are, interesting for as far back as anyone can remember and I'd hate to see them lose that because it's important.
Can we talk about that next time?
Yeah.
Talking about committees and.
Yes.
That'd be very progress.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I almost gave the press release. I'll save that.
The important thing is that some of the stuff that's passed is to try and take the pressure off the local taxpayers.
And it's interesting to go to that because the Congress, you hear there's, I mean, it's literally schools from all over the state and so you can tell, um, I think we have a lot of issues and the schools and the cities think they have a lot of issues and that's the one time where everybody sits around, or we have to sit around, it's a huge room. You have to stand up and say who you are and be recognized to talk, you can't just shout stuff out. So it's very orderly, but conversations get, it's not just like the city schools are all voting against the rural schools and rural, because there's ongoing conversation of why you feel the way you do or why it's happening and I think a lot of, um, we love things get taken care of there.
Anything else on the board? Not, we have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Louis, second by Deb, to adjourn, on favor say aye. Aye.